AP and E city and passed and we'll be going through the full legislature at the end of this month.
And that was the only African?
Yeah, well, Amy knew, Amy knew someone else that was interested, but we already had gotten the application, it was starting to get processed. But, um, yeah, so, yeah. So, that is pretty much all I had for remarks. And so, it's-
Start in with the first item on the agenda.
Motion and seconded the approval of the meeting minutes. There you go, thank you.
Yep. It's a lot shorter of a agenda than last one.
Yes, for sure. Alright. So, we've only got two, one of which I'm sure we'll spend over ninety percent of our time today. We've got a site plan review, conditional permit, aqua protection special permit, and floodplain development permit review for the purpose of constructing a propane and biopropene storage and wholesale distribution site with rail siding. Property is described as three eight nine three Route eleven in the town of Cortlandville, zoned I two, within the aqua protection district and is within an area of special flood hazard. Being referred here because it's within five hundred feet of Route eleven. Bulk storage and freight slash trucking terminals are permitted in the I two general industrial district, subject to site plan review and conditional permit. But it should be noted that bulk storage of fuel explosives chemicals are not permitted. But, the code doesn't really define the term fuel. But using other places in the code where it does use the term fuel, it's been determined that fuel connotates liquid fuel. So therefore, it is allowed by site plan review and conditional permit. Because the development exceeds a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in development, the applicant has also applied for an aqua protection special permit. And because it's in an area of flood hazard, area of special flood hazard, the applicant has also applied for a floodplain development permit. This is the third application for this parcel. First one was in February two thousand and eight for, it was subdividing up into the parcel we see today. And it was for a feed crushing and biodiesel facility. It was recommended for approval with twenty-four conditions. Second application was in October of two thousand and fourteen, similar to this one, very similar. It was for a railroad siding and propane storage slash distribution facility that was also recommended for approval with twenty-six conditions. The applicant now is proposing, very similarly, a rail terminal for the storage and wholesale and the wholesale distribution of propane and biopropene. This will have two rail sightings, which with each having eight propane tank rail cars per sighting, six sixty thousand gallon above ground propane tanks, and a twenty-four hundred square foot office building. Site plan also leaves room for future expansion. The proposed rail sightings would connect to the railroad right of way owned by the Cortland County IDA and operated by the New York Sussman and Western Railroad. Recommend they get approval from them. The site plan only shows three standard parking spaces. Applicant indicates that that is enough, but it's recommended that the town just consider the adequacy. The code requires lighting fixtures to be directed downward. So, just recommended that there's a lighting plan be submitted to the town. Code also requires industrial uses to have adequate buffers to prevent negative impacts with noise, traffic, dust, odor, smoke, et cetera. Therefore, recommended that the applicant mitigate any propane odors detectable at the property line. Protective bollards should be located around storage tanks, generator, and other valuable areas. Because those aren't on the site plans, recommended that site plan updated with those. And the site plan doesn't indicate any areas for snow storage. So it's recommended that they update their site plan to show designated areas for snow storage. The facility would be subject to multiple federal regulations, including the US EPA regulations codified in the Code of Federal Regulations, and the process safety management standard of OSHA. There's multiple different analyses and various things that they have to, that they have to submit up to federal regulators. But it's recommended that two of those, the, let's see, the release scenario analysis and the prevention program be submitted to the town so that they can have more information for their approval. The CRC did meet and reviewed this. We had DEC comment multiple things, they get in touch with the DEC division of permits. That it appears that a five acre waker would be required. If that's the case, applicant must submit, or must submit a SWIP. And post-construction, or, I missed one. That the project will need coverage under the construction general permit. And then, post-construction stormwater practices cannot be located in the floodplain because they must remain functional through the hundred year event. DOT commented that since they're getting access on Route eleven, they have to get a perm thirty-three con, minor commercial driveway application. And then, Cortland County Soil and Water Conservation said that mostly entire site is within an area of special flood hazard. Beware of that. DEC and Cortlandville Stormwater Regulation apply. And a SWIP will likely be needed. Let me just submit that to the town. Also present at the CRC was Kevin Whitney, chairman of the Cortlandville Board of Fire Commissioners, who conversed with the applicant over a myriad of things, hydrant placement and training. One of those federal regulations require that the applicant create a, let's see what it's called. Emergency response plan. So it's recommended that the applicant submit that to the Cortlandville Fire Department. And it's also recommended that the applicant obtain written confirmation from the Cortlandville Fire Department that the fire department has the training and resources to address an emergency situation at that facility. That includes placement of fire hydrants, fire hydrants and various things, just working with them. Section one seventy-eight dash eighty-one C of the code outlines the information required for floodplain development permit. Just make sure the town gets those if they haven't already, I'm sure they have. The proposed facility would be serviced by public water and sewer. So they'll need to get approval from the county health department via application to the town for connection to those systems. And finally, this proposed use is a type one action under seeker because it's in agricultural district certified pursuant to Ag and Markets Law twenty-two, twenty-two dash AA, section three oh three, three oh four, and involves the alteration of over two point five acres. With that, I've got some recommendations. That the applicant obtain written approval from the Cortland County IDA and the New York Sussman and Western Railroad for connection to the railroad. That the town consider adequately parking at the facility. That the lighting plan be submitted to the town. That the applicant mitigate any propane odors detectable at the property line. That the applicant update their site plan to include protective bollards around vulnerable areas. That the applicant update their site plan to show areas designated for snow storage. That the applicant meet the requirements of the US EPA regulations codified in the Code of Federal Regulations. That the applicant comply with OSHA's process safety management standard. That the release scenario required by the Code of Federal Regulations be submitted to the town. That elements of the prevention plan be submitted to the town. That the applicant reach out to DEC, Division of Permits, to coordinate seeker. That the applicant is covered under a general construction permit. That if a five acre waker is required for the site, the applicant submit a complete SWIP to DEC. That the applicant mitigate any negative impact the project's post-construction stormwater practices would have on the area of special flood hazard. That the applicant coordinate Route eleven access with DOT. That the applicant prepare and submit a SWIP to the town for review and compliance with section one seventy-eight dash ninety B one of the code. That the applicant submit the emergency response plan required by Code Federal Regulations to the, to the fire department, excuse me. That the applicant obtain written confirmation from the fire department that the fire department has the training and resources to address emergencies. That the applicant provide the documentation outlined in section one seventy-eight dash eighty-one C, that's the, the flood, or, yeah, floodplain. That the applicant obtain approval from county health for connection to the public water and sewer system and compliance with seeker.
Can I get a motion to accept staff's recommendations? Second. Any discussion? Let me start. Okay.
Rod eyes.
Rod eyes.
Are you aware of the list of internal contingencies that the staff can offer?
Yes.
Are any of those untenable or unaccomplishable, do you think?
We don't think so.
Okay, so they, in essence, are prudent, reasonable?
Yes.
Maybe a little overbearing?
No.
Okay. I don't know. Okay, good, good.
I had a couple of comments, more than, not as opposed, but I think your reasoning is a little convoluted to say it's not liquid, it's stored as liquid.
Well, so, Alex explained.
We don't get to make that determination, that's the town's determination.
Okay, alright. It's just, I mean, it's stored as a liquid, so, those are liquid. So, I mean, their gas comes at the top, their storage is liquid. Yeah, so, that's one, it doesn't matter, I mean, there's storage places right next door, it's not a problem. I don't know why they have their rule about the fuel anyhow, but it's in the natural zone. But anyhow, so that doesn't bother me. The second thing on the SWIP, I think that you're misconstruing a little bit what the DEC is saying. You're required, they're required to create a SWIP if it's more than one acre. If it's over five acres, they're required to submit ahead of time to get approval from DEC before they can start. Ordinarily, to prepare the SWIP, you submit you're on a line, you start construction, there's a look at it.
Okay.
Alright, but it's a little bit, that's often, that sounds a little bit off. You already got there and they gotta repair it, it's not, they have to. Other than that, I don't think they have anything. They're gonna have a hard time getting SWIPs in floodplain, but other than that, I, but out there, it's really not a problem out there because you've got Suitcoat Pond, everything goes into that anyhow, so it really doesn't make any difference.
On the headline here, it's probably immaterial, but, um, the site plan are new condition for the aqua protection special permit, and floodplain isn't listed there, so I don't know how you file them, but just if you have to look it up.
I'll make sure it's filed right. I also did the date wrong, it's twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-one. I caught that. Okay, I have a copy.
Is it ready on that one?
But just, however you file it, just that's one thing.
And just so you know, there was a lot of conversation on the town level, and I know we received a few inquiries about the material specifically and being in the aqua protection zone, about it being, you know, liquid versus, you know, and, and the conclusion was that, that it does gasify upon exposure when it's not pressurized. So, so, because, you know, there was a conversation of spillage and, you know, what happens if there's a leak? And so, but there was a lot of conversation around that, so, just thought I'd-
Where is, right next door, you got another girlfriend?
Right, yeah.
It's not a problem if it does spill, obviously, so, that's just the reasoning.
And that, there-
Maybe if you look at their ordinance and clarify a few things in their order.
Right, identify, you have the gas.
And I believe Ray Energy's attorney had conversations with Bruce Weber, which is where that statement was kind of pulled directly from, was that statement that-
Propane boils at minus forty-four degrees Fahrenheit.
Right.
So even on our coldest days, it's gonna vaporize as soon as it hits the air.
Where's the project being transported from?
I do not know. I, it's not retail, it's strictly a wholesale distribution, but yeah.
And there was a lot of language in there, you'll see, of all the fire codes and safety, obviously a hot topic as it's right next door to the Suitcoat facility that had the, the fire. So, part of that reason why a couple, yeah, the joint-
I did have a little concern about if there was a leakage, whether it's transferring through the air, whether that distance between that plant, which, I mean, do they, I don't even know if they have an open flame there, but I, but they do.
Suitcoat?
Yeah. No, well, they're melting oil, so, I mean, it's a hot-
They have some way to heat their tanks on occasion, I would imagine, or someplace.
Right, whether, whether any escaping gases could make it that far and, you know, ignite by that distance or not.
I can't speak definitively to that, but I believe just the way it's gonna dissipate into the atmosphere, if there were a catastrophic leak. I don't, I used to say catastrophic, just that it's happening.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't believe that's concerned.
I do have a question. The previous applications that were made in two thousand and eight, being semi-similar to this, was there a reason why they were withdrawn or not?
I have no, this is a completely different applicant. You know, this property was brought to him, he has other similar facilities in the northeast. So, the current owner of the property approached Mr. Ray. So, I don't know why those previous applications didn't move.
I'm aware of one, the project just never came to fruition.
Do you happen to know if any of the, like, planning or testing done that was here?
No, it was totally unrelated product and process, but the principles involved were, shall we say.
Good idea, bad execution.
Yeah, I feel secure with all the federal regulations and OSHA requirements and everything, that you're guided by those regulations more so than our town laws and that. I mean, those are more stringent things that you'd have to follow. A little concerned that the area, though, is getting quite heavily hazardously industrial. I mean, it's my drive in and we talk about, you know, the gateways into our city and that, you know, I'd prefer that it is. But being that this is out back, it's another benefit of the site planning here, that it's behind everything. There are already tanks sitting next door to it, so it's not something that we can really shoot down in any way and say no. So, like I said, I just feel a little better knowing that all the federal regulations and things are guiding the company and how it has to be done.
What's the IDA's property, where's that, where's the relatives?
So, this, actually recently discovered this when we were looking at potential broadband installation locations, but the IDA, IDA BDC actually owns the right of way on all of the railroad, coming railroad bed.
I sit on the IDA BDC, I was, I wasn't sure specifically what was going on.
Yeah.
It's just the, all right here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they, so, all, the entire road bed and then they have an agreement with, from my understanding, yeah.
Would that agreement need to be written into a deed or, you know, more than just a written agreement?
No, the railroad law supersedes just about every law.
Yeah. And also, the previous application said that Suitcoat was involved in that agreement of the railroad. Do they still have any binding, you know?
That's because it's a rail site, it comes off the main line into the Suitcoat property, and then it would divert, well, it's IDA property, rail line.
Yeah, now there is-
It'd divert into this facility.
There's just a little corner where it comes out and goes onto that property where the new rail will go. But, that's not Suitcoat though, is it?
No, it's not.
It, it used to be owned by Suitcoat, this property right here, and it kind of went into it a little bit, and that was the reason.
Yeah, down at the bottom there. I think this was Suitcoat here, but you're onto the rail bed there. It's just, I mean-
Could've been that side too.
I think-
Is there any signage involved with the project?
I've talked to Mr. Ray and the only thing that might go up front is just the address, just for postal emergency services, a thing like that.
Can you see it's kind of tucked back behind CNY there?
I'm gonna look at that idea.
Or, or John here, yeah, next, right, right, kind of that back there by there.
Again, because it's only wholesale distribution, we don't need the general public to know where the driveway is.
Then the other thing I had was the, um, the application submit the emergency response plan to the Cortlandville Fire Department. Do we think it should be submitted to the town too? I would think the town would, should be involved in that emergency planning as well as just the-
You mean the county planning board or the town board or what?
Town board or whoever it would be.
They got a fire commission, they, if they want a fire commission, I don't know. I, I would assume that's, they rely on them to come up with recommendations, I would think. I'm sure they tell the guys what's going on, you know, I don't know if they're, I, I would assume the fire commission's the person to do that, I don't know.
How would, how would emergency release of the gas be extinguished? Do we have, is it water or, I read it, something that it's water?
Let it go, burn off the valve.
Or burn it? I've seen other-
No, burn, I don't, no, you don't burn it. Just let it go.
Hey, the, uh-
Yeah. Have you ever seen propane blow up?
You just let it go.
Small tank. You know those little forklifts that some are propane driven? There's one that threw a tister in one time and a spark went off and blew up the propane tank, lifted the roof about four feet off the building, flattened out half the wall and stuff.
Well, I've seen burn offs before, where they're burning off.
Hopefully they got the right controls.
You know, and if that's something that-
Valve controls, yeah.
But it's burned off with flames.
I think at the CRC meeting, Mr. Whitney just communicated with Mr. Ives about the location of the fire hydrants more in respect to fighting any fires to keep them away from the tanks and what would be the best locations to the fire hydrants, to be able to access them to fight fires at, like, the administration building or the location, so, it was-
And with the placement of it, I mean, there's not a lot of exposure.
Right, yep. Facing.
Anybody else have any other questions or concerns? All the question, all those in favor of accepting staff's recommendation? Aye? Anybody opposed? Extentions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Was there at one point in time a similar operation they wanted to do with the problem? Is it this magnitude or no?
There was something, probably a couple times, yeah, right next door again.
Yeah, right up the rail.
Something happened. Very similar.
Rail couldn't build a structure.
Not quite this big, I think, but it's a pretty good size.
It was a little closer.
Oh, okay.
There was, I know there was issues, I don't couldn't-
But there was something else similar, I remember seeing the pictures of the facility next door with all the tanks. Saying, gee, we're worried about that one, look at these.
Alright. Last one is subdivision and area variance review for the purpose of subdividing an existing four acre parcel on two sides of the road into a two point five plus or minus acre parcel on the east side and a one point five plus or minus acre parcel on the west side. And then combining one point five acre parcel with an existing adjacent one point seven acre parcel. Property is sixteen forty-six Daisy Hollow Road in the town of Virgil. It's zoned agricultural residential conservation, it's in the aqua protection district, yes. It is here because it's within five hundred feet of Daisy Hollow Road, which is what it's on. So, the reason it's here is because, well, it, in order to grant area variance, they have to realize the benefit to realize by the applicant against any potential detriment to health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood community. Reason it's here is that their zoning law requires a minimum lot size of three acres and the proposed parcel is two point five acres. Let's see, probably should've read this one first, I was more worried about Ray. So, section five twenty of Town of Virgil subdivision regulations requires certain things to be in the final plat, just that they get that to the town before they do their final plat approval. And then, this is an unlimited action under seeker. So, recommendations are that the town balance benefit to be realized by the applicant against any potential detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood community or community. That the final plat be submitted to the town in compliance with section five twenty and compliance with seeker.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation. On that, second. Question?
I want to understand if this was one parcel at one time, with the road splitting.
Yes, it is currently.
How did that happen?
It was a little far.
Mm-hmm. So-
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
It was all far, it's the house, even the garage, it's the house area, the barns under the side.
Who was it?
Jared Royer.
He was up on my basement.
Jared Royer. I was standing there watching the lyrics. It was full of salmons.
Oh, okay.
And then, whatever, one of the salmons, that was there.
So, generally how a parcel gets split and stays together even though it's on two sides of the road is the parcel existed before the road and the right of way just ended up coming.
And that's the only reason we felt it really needs to come to a full review, just because they are, you know, but again, it is, it is adequate for, you know, Department of Health requirements for lot size, but doesn't adhere to the town. So we felt like it should at least come onto the, for a full, full report because of the half.
Vise per the GML thing that we do earlier, number one, I have to bring it here because it's an area variance anti-subdivision, so.
All those in favor of staff's recommendation? Anybody opposed?
Alright. Do we want to talk about?
Mm-hmm, do you want to move on? Do you want to just review the other returns really quick?
We'll do the other returns.
And while Alex is going through those, after we go through the returns that were just, the small ones sent back, we did get another, we reviewed that victory sign for Family Health Network.
Last month.
Last month. And they made it determined to send it back as an area variance.
Instead of a use variance. Instead of a use variance.
So we hemmed and hawed about if that could just be a return letter or.
If we can determine, per the, the GML referral thing we review every year, if we, if we as the planning department determine that it's solely of local concern, we can return it since it's just an area variance. But it kind of toes that line because we did already review it as use variance, but it's, I, I can't really claim that it's solely of local because it's right on two eighty-one. So I, we figured that we could come here and ask you guys whether it should be a return or they did submit it after the deadline for this month or we review it again next month.
But we also didn't want to hold them up anymore than they have to be, and so that's that drafted. Alex did that drafted return letter.
I think we already approved it once, right, at the use variance?
Right.
Why would we be opposed to it as an area variance? It doesn't make sense to come through as a one.
That, that was our sense, but. If everybody's on board, then we'll just send them this return letter. We won't have to drag it out for another month for them or anything. It's just, they sent it back under this, so we wanted to.
I'm not sure why there's an animated sign there, but that's their.
Do we need to make the motion on that?
Just administrative head.
No, we don't, no.
So, other than that.